You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, our service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the town of Branford.
Welcome, everybody. I will call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for February 3rd, 2021 to order. I just remind everybody that this is a meeting under the suspension of in-person requirements. If when speaking, please state your name prior to speaking. If you'd like to be recognized, use the raise your hand function. If you're participating by phone, you can, I believe it is star nine, use that function and star six to mute and unmute yourself via phone. Ask everybody else to mute themselves as we begin. Item one, to approve the board of selectmen minutes from January 20th, 2021.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Then moved by Selectwoman Higgins, seconded by Selectman Dunbar. Any edits, comments, changes to the minutes? Hearing on all favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed, extension, passage unanimously. Item two, discuss a citizen's petition regarding Parkside Village. This was an item that we discussed in quite length at last meeting. A lot of participation on this discussion, this topic. I just would like to say, you know, from, you know, my observations from what occurred that night, I think it was something that we continue to try to stress is that within that authority, housing authority, there needs to be much better communication and transparency among each other and among the citizens of not only Parkside, but of Branford. I think that is what has created a lot of the issues. And as I stated previously, a lack of confidence. And I think it's the current board's responsibility to restore the confidence that the community should have in any board commission or housing authority that exists.
Jamie? Sorry, this is Bo Whalen, who lives at Parkside. And when it's time for a comment, I would like to very much talk about the poor residents who live here.
Okay, thank you, Bo. Yes, I will. I'm going to first have, you know, the board make a few comments and perhaps we will then open it up. So I will call on you. I see your number. Thanks.
Thank you, dear.
So as I was stating, I do, you know, think that is the responsibility of the members of the housing authority. Another observation, I think it was I made is that I feel that there may be within the board, obviously, there's, again, it's healthy to have debate and a different opinion and consider. And then when they act, they act as a board. However, it was mentioned and throughout the meeting that they have legal representation that, you know, the perception is by members of the housing authority that they're representing the individuals and not the so the board as a whole. And, you know, again, that's what was stated. I think there's some, some interactions that, that do indicate that I can recognize why that perception exists out there. And I do think all of the members, chair and all the other members need to recognize the fact that counsel or consultants are not a member of the board and that every member of the board, whether either chair or the other, the other four members, all have equal votes. Again, you know, there's, there's always going to be dissension. Many times there's going to be dissension on a board or opposing views. But at the end of the day, that board takes a vote and that is the position of the board. You have counsel. The perception by the other members is that they're at a, they're not being treated equally as other members. That can erode the working relationship that members need to have with one another. So that's something I would recommend that the board be aware of, mindful of, and that that perception does exist. Not only, again, with among other board, with other board members, but with the residents who are watching. Those are some of my observations. I know we're going to see where we go from here. I don't know if any of the other select or Selectwoman Higgins or Selectman Dunbar at this time have any comments or if we're interested in hearing. I know we do have a resident on the call. Be interested to hear from Ms. Whalen. I think before last meeting, we heard quite a bit from citizens that did not live in the Parkside as well as the board members and some, as I stated before the attorney. But I don't know, is anybody have, are there any of the other board members before I ask Ms. Whalen to make her comments?
I reserve my comments until after I hear everyone. I mean, ultimately, this board needs to work for the people, the residents that are there. And I think that's what the main goal should be. It's a matter of how we make that work. And I'd like to hear what they have to say to see if we can get to that direction.
Okay. Ms. Whalen, would you like to make a comment?
Yes, I would. There are a couple of comments I'd like to make. We were not aware of Beacon taking over. Now Beacon has taken over and I have to say, I left, when Merritt left, I ended up with a handshake with Cheryl and she said, good luck. And I said, okay. And Beacon has come around and they have, the maintenance people have been great. I talked to John Sullivan, I think his name is. He is the vice president of Beacon. And we discussed landscaping, which is trash here. They do nothing. And I said, you know, they're going to be in charge of our winter cleanup. That's a joke. Our poor maintenance guy is here from all night. This young kid out here trying to do everything himself. And Beacon comes by and tells us what they're putting on our doors. In other words, they took my winter wreath off and put a Valentine thing on. I didn't ask for anything for Valentine's Day. I don't want anything. And neither do any of the other people here. If they want something on their door, they'll hang it. But Beacon seems to want everything the way they want it, not with what we want. And I woke up yesterday morning to a big, long, black snake outside in the middle, you know, the storm had just ended. And there was a five-foot black snake coming down the hill at me. And I called maintenance and Joe came over and got rid of it. But that's the town of Branford who has not cleaned up all those fallen trees. I'm not blaming you yet, Jamie, but I really think that Beacon, the maintenance people can walk through the front yard every morning and police the place and take all the dead branches that have fallen from the night before out and clean us up. This is ridiculous. We look like we're falling apart and we aren't. Our places are warm and secure. But the outside, it's like a Gestapo. We have to do what they want. And I'm not living that way, Jamie. I live in the United States of America and I have a right. It's the residents, you know, we should, we should be having more things that join us together, like bingo's and things like that. I mean, it sounds stupid, but it keeps everybody's minds sharp. And seniors have to have that. And we can do it, you know, in a very easy way in the club room and staying socially apart. But no, Beacon instead worries about our front doors. It's, and the elevators, oh, they are, well, they're not elevators. They're lifts. People are at least once every two weeks, the fire department is here and they are prying somebody who's been stuck in it for at least an hour, prying them out and getting them out. And the last person that was stuck in there was for quite a while and it was raw outside. That is not being taken care of and not being seen to. And EverSource has never come back. And if we lose power, Building A is not going to get their power back. EverSource is going to have to bring us a generator. And that takes another two hours because it was never followed through from August of last year, when Beacon was here and all the underground electric was taken care of. And we can't seem to find what's in our kitty, how much money we have. I found out that we ended up paying for the police and the legal women voters, why we had to have those. It's ridiculous and it's, nothing's being taken care of. The clubhouse is a sloppy mess. Nobody wears a mask in there. And the washers and dryers, they've gone up in cost and they're still breaking down like there's no tomorrow. It's, you know.
This sounds like a place that needs a redevelopment, doesn't it?
Not a re, you know what it needs? It needs some TLC. In plain English, tender loving care. You can power wash the outside, you can get rid of the dead trees and plant some grass and get a landscaper who knows what the hell they're doing, like the kids we used to have here. That's all. And thank you, Jamie.
Thank you. And please, I ask everybody, don't comment when others are speaking. All right, this is the form.
I'm sorry, I'm frustrated.
No, no, you were, you were fine. Somebody interrupted while you're speaking. Thanks.
Yeah, I know. And I bypassed her.
Mr. Petrowski, can I unmute yourself?
Thank you. And so, Jamie, I got to tell you, I agree with you for what you said in the beginning, leave it or not. But I would just like to do a little cleanup from last meeting if I may. There was questions that were answered. One in particular from Representative Rocket that was asking about town property. Prior to the land swap deal, the property that I was talking about, which stated at the planning and zoning meeting was through time Sean Heffernan, who stated that if this project does go up, that the whole parking lot that we currently use or the parents use for Slaney Field will no longer be available for parking because it has to be a fire zone for the hook and ladder truck. And no cars will be able to park there. People could walk across it, assuming you could ride your bike. But as far as a parking lot, it will not be able to use that anymore for parking. So when I say loss of town property, that's what I'm referring. I wasn't referring to the land swap. And unless that changed since last planning and zoning meeting, which I don't know that it has.
It hasn't changed.
Go ahead.
It hasn't. Sorry, I'm muted.
Star six.
So I don't mind her, she's fine. But that's, you know, so that's, I just want to clarify that, that that's what I was talking about, that if this does go through that, that parking lot will be unavailable for the citizens of this town to use that ball field. And number two, I know there was questions about the money and I would just like to clean that up a hair. The money that was talking about was not, no one said that any commissioner went in and stole money out of the bank. What we're saying or what was found prior to the first citizen's petition, which I believe went in in 2017, was that over the course of like 10 years or nine years prior, rent money was collected in the sum of four and a half million dollars. And there's no record of where that money went. That's where that comes into question. And Doug Dennis, I have it here on the original petition. Doug Dennis and Joe Chadwick admitted on the FOIA hearing that there was no record of anything pre-2015, 2016. So there's no record of the money coming out anywhere. And as anyone could see that drivers by there, you know, they don't have new roofs or new siding or anything. And there's been no permits pulled. Beacon, I believe, pulled one or two for, you know, for when they want to blast or whatever. But that's where the money is. No one is saying that somebody went in and withdrew the money and stole it. It was a course of action that no one could, no one could produce receipts of where the rent money over 10 years went. And the building doesn't physically look like there's been any improvements at all. So that was, that was what's in question. And I understand that audit was done in 2019, but the money that was missed was prior to 2017. And I believe Representative Sires touched on that. And one last thing, just with the cleanup here. As far as that land swap goes, that was done, was it three years ago, I believe? And nothing's been done with it. Do you think maybe that should be re-referred back to the RTM to see if that's something that the town needs? Seeing that when I talked to you in your office, I think it was a year or two ago, to with Michael Pericone was there and Damian Plodish as well. You had stated that there was an agreement with the housing authority in the town, which they could use, you know, the driveway section of our, of the town property. Then we use the ball field in return. And there's never been an issue with that arrangement from day one, as far as I know, with that arrangement. And then all of a sudden, once Beacon came in, all of a sudden, there needed to be this land swap done for insurance purpose. So I mean, for the 40 years that it was prior, it never bothered anyone to be the way it was. But now it seems like that land swap was done to facilitate this out of state builder. And again, it can't be that important if three years went by and nothing happened with it. So seeing the RTM does deal in real estate and that seems to be a real estate transaction, that maybe it gets kicked back there or re-referred and let them hear the real reasons of why that land swap was done and go from there. I mean, that's, you know, and like I said, I'm not going to beat a dead horse from last meeting. I'd said my presentation twice, just so hopefully it resonates. Not going to go there again. I just wanted to clear some of that up. And one example, just real quick, getting back to the money was, one example, and Michael Pericone could comment further on this, was recently, I believe it was like a year ago, when Merritt was still there, a pressure washing job was paid for for $6,000 and was never completed. And I believe that person that that money went to was directly related to the property manager herself. The job never got done, the money never got recouped and nothing ever happened. So I would simply ask that, seeing they have this law, you know, Yale Law School representing them, is why didn't a letter get sent to say, hey, you got paid, we want our money or come finish the job? And that's possibly where maybe the money over the 10-year span maybe kind of disappeared to was, you know, inflation of job rates that maybe people knew. I'm not, that's just my opinion. I'm not accusing anybody. I just want to get that straight. But I just wanted to kind of clean that up. And like I said, I'm sure Mrs. Sires has more if there's any questions also. You know, you can ask any of us. And I thank you again.
All right, thanks for the clarification and just one clarification on my part. Prior, there, there is not, nor was there, was I aware of any agreement in place in terms of the town utilizing the field and, you know, accessing their parking spaces through our property. There was, you know, I know, I think there was an understanding that that was occurring, but just want to clear the record if there wasn't an agreement in place or there currently is now. Mr. Cook?
Yeah, thank you. Couple of things. You know, I try not to spread myself too thin in terms of what goes on in town, but I was drawn down to Parkside for a number of reasons. And the one thing that I did experience was raising my hand at a meeting and not being able to speak at all. Matter of fact, the minute my hand went up, they adjourned the meeting. So that raised my antenna. My antenna stayed raised with a couple of things. Although Mr. Petrowski says that, okay, the money probably was not taken from the bank per se, nobody's saying it was. Four and a half million dollars, any way you look at it, is still unaccounted for. And we go to the authority in the town, you know, whether it's the housing authority, the selectman, RTM, and nobody seems to care. How could you not care about four and a half million dollars? I mean, we're not, it's, that to me is just, I have a hard time wrapping myself around that at all. So having dealt with corruption and dishonesty in this town for the better part of 12 years, I figured, well, once again, we have to go outside the town because the leadership in this town isn't going to take care of it. But I wrote letters to the Attorney General, the Housing Authority, the Finance Authority for Housing, and quite frankly, the FBI. And they're working on it because I don't think four and a half million dollars missing, whether it's unaccounted for or embezzled or whatever, is something the town should take lightly. And I just cannot believe, you know, after 65 years of being on this planet, that, you know, the leadership of this town would not somehow address the concerns of people. For the selectman to say, for the first selectman to say, you know, the commission has to work this out for themselves and, you know, everybody should get along. If you didn't see at the last meeting, Mr. First Selectman, that this is an entirely dysfunctional commission, they can't even sit in the same room, never mind get along. And why don't you just, for the first time in a long time that I could take a leadership role and do something about it? At least make them accountable. I mean, is that asking too much? You're saying like you got like five cats fighting and you're saying, you know, can you get along? No, they can't get along. Clearly, you saw it at the last meeting. So why are you even asking? I just, I'm just dumbfounded, the way that quite frankly, you know, you lead this town. When you ran in 2013, you ran on leadership. Well, where is it? Because I haven't seen it and I've been hoping for it, but I haven't seen any of it. The point is this, four and a half million dollars is unaccounted for. You have to go back to 2012 in an audit, forensic audit, to see what happened for it. If you don't do that for the community, as our first selectman, as our chief executive officer, then I got to say out loud, I wonder what you're even doing sitting in that office.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Jamie?
I'm sorry, I tried to raise my hand. I can't find the hand raised section.
Say your name. State your name.
Mike Pericone?
Okay.
Okay. The question I have, and there's going to be a housing authority meeting at seven o'clock and every single meeting we bring this up and nothing has ever happened. Mark Colletto has been requesting the prior year's bank statements from A. Collins for the last 18 months. So if they want to shut up everybody, including myself, about where money might have went, why hasn't she given him the accounts going back to like 15, 16 and 17? And just totally ignores it? That, that's a problem. It's like a slap in the face. We've been talking about this, but they know there's no ramifications. So they just ignore it. And maybe she'll shut everybody up if she produces those bank statements, which Mark should have access to because he's a member. He could go through them. And if nothing's found, we're going to be the ones who look like an idiot. And but why is that not being pressured that she has to? And if she can't do that and work with other board members, she should not be on that board, plain and simple. Thank you.
I agree.
All right. Any other comments?
Jamie, it's Bo Whalen again.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Whalen.
Somebody has to get a handle on this place along with the housing authority. Mark has come in and Jerry has come by here and they have looked and they don't like what they see going on, I'm sure. And I, as a resident, I've been here in the town of Branford for 70 years and I'm really tired of the abuse we put up with. And all of a sudden, there's no money. And where does the money go? Because nothing's being done per se. And except we kept getting different things to hang on our door. We don't want different things to hang on our door. Stop pissing our money away and put it to good use. You know, I'm going to text you a picture of the snake that woke me up the other day. They came down the hill in the middle of a snowstorm and greeted me. You don't often have a snake come out in the middle of winter. But obviously, pest control isn't working here either. And they should have been. So I will send it to your cell phone, Jamie.
Okay, thank you.
It's ridiculous.
Okay.
I'm going to remute.
All right. I got a couple who would like to speak. Nancy Wacowski.
Okay, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, hi. Just, I have three quick things. First, and I do agree with Wayne Cook about the Housing Authority Board. I brought it up at the last selectman meeting and I think I brought it up at an RTM. They are never, with the five members they have on now, it is like, well, there's three cats and two dogs, let's say. They're never going to get along. It's very obvious if you go on one of the, to their meetings, it's the votes always three against two. It's just not going to happen. It needs intervention at this point. Jamie, you need to remove somebody or get in on it and say, hey, this is the way it's going to be or I'm going to have to remove somebody. Something has to be done because it's just, it is not working and they're never, it's like you're going to need a mediator through a messy, nasty divorce. The two people are never going to get on the same page and these five members are never going to get on the same page. So that's number one. Number two, when I brought this up, a selectman meeting quite a long time ago, when Parkside was started and then before Merritt came in, they had Paul, who was their maintenance man, and Mary Griffith, man the office. And the place was a well-run establishment. Everything was done on time. There was none of this. Then all of a sudden, Merritt came in. However, they came in, I don't know how Merritt was brought in and Mary was let go, Paul was fired and Merritt came in and that's when things started to go downhill. So it wasn't always like this. And the third thing to wrap up, it was brought up a few meetings ago about having a forensic audit for that money. Has that ever been looked into or put into writing to get a forensic audit?
No, it has not. A forensic audit, no.
All right, how can, can one happen? How can that happen? I mean, there's, it's four and a half million dollars. It's got to be some. I mean, there's, it's four and a half million dollars. It's got to be somewhere or prove that where it went.
Yeah.
So I would think the forensic audit would prove one way or the other.
Uh, yes, yeah. I mean, the, the forensic audit is a process. I did, as we know, we had, and again, I, I, I understand the difference between in the audit that is submitted to the state, I think it's on a biannual basis, as well as in a forensic audit. I understand what is being asked now about the forensic audit. I want to be clear. Um, at the time when we had, the request was to have the initial audits. And we, I asked the professional who had done the, reviewed the accounting system, the, the books, the financials, uh, you know, they, I said, you've, I asked, is there anything else you felt we should have done? He said, is it his opinion? No. I do have um, concern in which I've had conversations with commission members uh, regarding um, the, the lack of sharing information or providing information with all the members. Um, this is, this is public, you know, should be information. If it's not public information, it certainly should be information that uh, is uh, viewed or at, the other members have access to view. So um, I've had some discussions and then I think coming out of this, it's uh, something that needs to be recommended to, again, um, improve that uh, uh, internal controls or oversight in the working relationship uh, that's happening.
But will there be a forensic audit? Will one be asked for? I'm kind of confused. As I understand what you just said about with the commissioner, so is somebody gonna ask for? I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, as far as the, the forensic audit, um, right now I can give you an answer on that, that, you know, that's something that would have to be decided and funded. And then uh, also um, uh, I would have to check, uh, you know, the legal authority to, if we have the legal authority um, to uh, conduct that, that audit.
This citizen isn't even gonna ask for it.
Jamie?
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Wakowski. Uh, Selectman Dunbar.
Yeah, um, a- a- as far as a forensic audit with my background, normally, um, if there's any law enforcement involved, forensic audits are done through them if they are actually looking at it. I think prior to us stepping in, not saying it's not needed, someone probably needs to do it, that's for sure. But it may be something that they're already doing. Um, it may be something that we have to reach out. If Mr. Cook has, in fact, and I'm sure he has, reached out to these agencies and they're looking into it. I think before we get involved with a forensic audit, we'd have to make sure they're not so they're, we're, they're not planning it so that we don't interfere with any investigation that may be taking place. I think town attorney may be able to find out from those agencies if they are or are not involved. And then certainly we could try to move forward after that.
Uh, well, and, and what I think needs further clarification is this body, uh, you know, has the authority that that needs to be uh, is certainly this, we are the appointing body. We are the body that has under state statute. We can remove i- i- in an extreme instance, remove an individual uh, prior to completing their term. Uh, but, and, and under that we can uh, as we're going through that process, we can request uh, certain information. But in order to conduct a financial uh, forensic audit, I point, going through that process, we have to just be sure that um, we're, we're following the, the correct process and we're the right authority. If it's up, they submit their audit not to the town of Branford. They submit their financials to the state of Connecticut. And if, again, if that's something that we have to go through that uh, agency to request, we'll do that, but we need, we need to determine that first before I, I give it direct, I give an answer to that question that Ms. Wakowski proposed.
Comment, please.
Um, I actually have uh, a number 606 had their hand up first. I'm just trying to go in order. As I see him popping up, 606, 3893, please state your name.
Oh, hi, Jamie, Representative Sires, thank you. Uh, just for clarification, in 2016, when I was doing the research back with the state and with the housing, the, the Parkside and Housing Authority, there was an agreement in place between Merritt and the state that all work orders were to be in triplicate form. They were supposed to have the person who did the job got one, the file got another, and then the um, property manager got a third. So I went back from 2012 to 2016. I requested it time and time again. There was never any accountability for any work orders. They didn't exist. I asked to look at the operating budget as well as the reserve. By statute, the housing authority is supposed to keep two banks active. Um, so I think we do have a problem. For example, if one of the residents said, I need my room painted. There is no accountability that we know, did it get painted? How much was paid for it? Who got the payment? It's very difficult, it was difficult to even do a preliminary visual audit by anyone who was researching this. There's, there was just no paperwork. There was no triplicate form that was an agreement between Merritt and the state of Connecticut. That's how they were going to conduct business. So we don't know who did what, who received the funding and it becomes very difficult to backtrack that. The other source of missing fund is by virtue of the fact that for five years, they didn't rent 15 to 20 units. If you take a minimum of 400 a unit, you, you're looking at a lot of money just by purposely not renting units in anticipation of funding for the project. They knew this was wrong. They, there's many emails that they did say they knew they shouldn't have done this. So they short sold the residence operating budget by not renting units. They weren't able to pay a lot of bills during the time as evident through email, FOIA obtained emails. They weren't able to pay a lot of their vendors because they admitted they purposely did not rent units. You are a housing authority. Your due diligence is to the people who live there and the fiduciary responsibility of those people. It is not to developers. It is not to destroy the units of where these people live. This is going back since 2012. And the eyes were just not on these poor people who lived there to know they weren't going to be aware of how it worked. I, I still don't know if the generators that were put in kick in or work. There's so many questions of, of where their money was allocated, how it was. And the simple truth is, it should be a local and, and state public entity where any one of us could go to the town clerk's office or their books or records, review the documents very easily and get these answers. Because you're dealing with residents who have the right to know where their money went. As you know, and, and as I can prove, I spent thousands of dollars obtaining FOIA documents. Nothing was easily obtainable through the housing authority. Nothing. Why was that permitted? Why was that so? You only are obfuscating and don't want people to know if you're operating a business or an entity that's a public entity like that. I do understand that the audit, the information they give the state, I've read, I've gone through all their budgets and who prepared them. But you're only doing and providing budgets based on the information you're giving. Nobody's doing a deep dive into the book. Nobody's doing a deep dive to the invoices, to the monies. You're just reviewing facts and figures that are provided. So the difference with the forensic audit, obvious if it's in the purview of the town versus this, it is drastically different. And again, as you hear from the resident, the one resident who lives there, and I encourage any of the Board of Selectmen to go speak to the residents who live there to understand what's happening. And hopefully we could come to some resolution. That place did not have to be in deplorable condition that it is now. There was enough operating budget to keep the Branford Housing Authority in the hands of Branford Housing Authority, Branford residents and Branford land. There is no reason why that was not able to maintain. It's, it's an atrocity, the position we're in now. And I really trust that the Board of Selectmen in the town will do everything we can to make sure all our residents stay there and it just gets back into a livable ADA accessible facility. And I'm sure that, that is the goal. That will be the goal of the Board of Selectmen. Thank you.
Thanks.
Comment, please.
Yes, go ahead.
This is the representative, I'm sorry, to Selectman Dunbar's point, you know, it's Wayne Cook speaking. You know, why is it that a citizen has to take it upon himself to contact these various agencies? Why doesn't that come from either the RTM or the Selectman's office or the Board of Selectmen? I mean, you know, I'm not the government. You know, I mean, there's four and a half million dollars unaccounted for and nobody seems to care about it, but a group of citizens down there that got me interested in it and myself. You know what goes on in this town? I'm going to show you. Since we don't have screen sharing, I'm going to show you. This is what goes on. Nobody wants to know anything. The RTM, let's be reminded, sent this issue over to the Board of Selectmen because why? Cause they didn't want to deal with it. Why didn't they want to deal with it? Because that means they had to do something about it. You know, my wife, and let me say this, my wife used to have an expression, which I never fully understood. It was with knowledge comes responsibility. Now I really understand it because what I'm seeing in this government right across the board, RTM, Board of Selectmen, whatever, is the, is really the axiom that with no knowledge comes no responsibility. In other words, if people don't know about it, they don't have to do anything about it. And that's what we're seeing over and over and over again. Is it any big surprise that the same first selectman that doesn't want to pursue a forensic audit in a four and a half million dollar missing situation? Is the same first selectman that quite frankly, covered up fraud when it occurred during the Costco, you know, wetlands hearing? I mean, everyone in this town knows what happened. You don't have to be a, a very, you know, astute to see that that peer review was, was written upon by the former inland wetlands director. You don't have to follow the docs very closely to see what went on here. But what did the first selectman do along with the town attorney? Covered it up. He covered it up. So how's that any different than what he's doing now? You know, four and a half million dollars, what does he care? He doesn't want to know about it because, because if he knew something about it, then he'd have to do something about it. And that's the problem with Branford government. I'm sorry, sorry to make this, you know, large sort of sweeping comment, but I got to tell you folks, I've lived this for 12 years. I've gone through two administrations, two corrupt administrations, and I'm telling you, you got a real problem in this town. You got a real problem in this town and until the first selectman stands up and takes responsibility, you're going to continue to have a problem. You don't need me to say it. You all know it.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right, is there anyone else that would like to speak?
I would. This is Nancy Wakowski.
Nancy, uh, if those who've already spoken, I, if you could just.
Okay, I understand.
No, 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 just, just make a, all I'm gonna ask is just make a brief, if it's something new, maybe just because I want to get through the agenda and I, I have a seven o'clock meeting that I have to present that to, so.
Sure, it's just a comment. My name's Nancy Wakowski. I don't know if anyone heard it on the last, I think it was the selectman meeting, but so question, Jay Pottinger, is he the attorney for Beacon?
Yes.
Okay, then Tacey, I don't even know, she should be, she's the chairman of the BHA board. And she said she was not on mute and she goes into Siri, call Jay Pottinger. So if she's the commissioner, a commissioner and the head uh, chairman for the BHA, why is she even saying to call Jay Pottinger? Who is the attorney for Beacon? So that's it. I just wanted to bring that up.
Clarification, I believe, I believe what was stated at the last meeting is that Jay Pottinger is with the Yale School who's representing uh, Branford Housing Authority. I believe that's what he stated, um, not Beacon, um, okay?
Okay.
But, but to the point, I, I think one of the concerns that we had or concern shared is that uh, the, the attorney was, attorney shouldn't be representing individuals aboard, it should be representing boards. And, and there's a perception there among, you know, not just observers from those that was, that serve on the board, it was expressed that night that they feel that not, you know, that the, the uh, attorney who's supposed to be representing the housing authority has um, maybe too much power or, or influence over the board. That, that's what was expressed that night. That was my takeaway uh, from, from state. Okay, with that, um, is, is there anyone else? I don't know if these are leftover hands that were still up, uh, but if not.
Yeah, now I have a question.
Go ahead.
Actually, a statement, this is Michael Pericon again. Uh, one important thing for everybody to know, and we'll see how serious the Board of Selectmen is, is coming up in April, Tacey Lowe, who has been a Branford Housing Authority member, um, through all of this and, and with her lack of oversight, vacancies and everything, is up for renewal. So based on this, are we going to reward her again and just put her on and a slap in the face to the people in the town when her, her work has been subpar and with all these complaints? So everybody will find out how serious the Board of Selectmen is come April. Because if she's allowed to be on that, basically, that's just saying that you, you really don't care. Thank you.
You're gonna sink our ship in feeding dough.
Okay, please, uh, no, no, wait till you're recognized before commenting. All right.
I'd like to speak one last time in closing if I may.
Go ahead. Say your name. I know.
Todd, Todd Pachowski. Um, I just like to say in closing and, and, you know, this is to the Board of Selectmen, all, all three of you. No, this was a lot to digest. There's so many moving parts in this thing where, you know, you have fire code violations that are still that been months that there've been a violation. You have money missing, you have units that aren't getting rented. You know, there's just so many wrongdoings down there. Now, I don't even know where you guys even start tackling this thing. I mean, I don't know if you got to sit down and hit it one item at a time and, and kind of go through this, but I mean, I know it's a lot to take on at once. And I just hope, I mean, with all the, you know, with everything that has been brought to you guys and presented to you, you know, that, you know, obviously you've, you've, you admitted that there's an issue there. And the issue, and I'm not, I don't know Mark or Jerry or, or the, any of them from a hole in the wall, but it seems like Mark and Jerry kind of, you know, Mark being a property manager knows more than the other ones. I think that they should kind of start listening to them. And, you know, move forward, but you know, like everyone said, it's been 16 months, people, they're not going to get along. So I think you should intervene at some point, discuss it, do what you gotta do. Like I said, it's a lot to take in. But you know, something has to be done. You can't just, just say it's going to work itself out because it's not. You have two members that are for the out of state developer and you have two members that are for the residents that live there. And, you know, it's never going to get solved. And I just hope you guys come to some agreement between the three of you of what should be done. I mean, and like I said, it is a lot to take on because it's so bad. It's not like one issue. It's a, it's bad down there. And I, you know, we're just looking for you guys to do the right thing here and that's all we ask for and you know, hopefully that happens and thank you very much.
Thanks for your comment. Please mute yourself if you're not speaking. Um, okay, um. Uh, let's see here. Anybody else? No.
Jamie, thank you for listening. Bo Whalen.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Whalen. All right, uh, at this time, any comments from the board?
If I guess, I guess my only comment at this point in time is, uh, it'll go with what Todd's brought up is that we have a lot to absorb. Um, there has to be changes. We know that. Who's right, who's wrong? Obviously there's multiple opinions as far as that goes. Um, I will say this though, that um, you know, Mr. Cook made a statement about he has to say things to get things going. Well, I, I guess I'll give you this, Wayne. Um, you did bring it up. It is being looked at. There are many, many people now involved. That's a positive thing. The more people involved, the more information we can get. It's not an easy fix. We only meet twice a month. We have no power outside of this meeting except for talking to people and, and getting information. So it's a little difficult to take a lot of actions. Um, but, but I, I believe that if we find out whether or not there are any criminal cases going um, that, that we will need to look at or wait out, unfortunately, they take their own paces. But there's a lot of things on the table and um, unfortunately, there's more questions than answers. And, and it's going to take time. Anyone that thinks that this is going to be immediate, it's not. Anyone that thinks that this is going to be immediate, it's not. It really isn't. And that's that's unfortunate because the residents there need need action now. So I'll do the best I can and I'm sure the other selectmen will too with all the information we have. But but people have to understand it is going to take some time. It's not an easy fix. That's all I got.
May I make one quick response, please? Quick response?
Go ahead.
Yeah, quick response to Selectman Dunbar. You know, let me suggest this, Selectman Dunbar. I don't think there's a person in this town better qualified to lead the inquiry about a forensic audit than you. So you're Selectman, you're a former law enforcement officer, captain in the police force. Why don't you, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but why don't you take this as a as a as a personal responsibility to go out there and see what the status of things are? You know, whether a forensic audit isn't, you know, is in some sort of process here or whether or not the town should engage in it? Who's better than you to do that? Not me, I'll tell you that, not me.
It's it's not a matter of me doing it because it's it's not within my privy too. I've never done them. I just know they get done, they're done by highly trained people. It's not something that anyone can just go and do. We will have to find out what our authority is on that. I believe it needs to be done by someone, either a legal agency or so forth. But we have to make sure it's within our 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 rights to do it. But this is not called in deaf ears. It's obviously going forward. It's just the path that it takes needs to be determined.
Can I ask on behalf of the citizenry, I know I'm just one citizen, that you take this upon yourself to look at it and see if a forensic audit can be done? That's all. Not that you have to do it yourself, of course, but can it be done?
Well, we're we're looking into it. I've asked a question tonight, asked the attorney to find out what's what's going on and we'll go from there. I mean, listen, I've listened to some of the meetings too. They're very difficult to follow sometimes and and people don't always get the chance to to talk at them. I don't know if that's a defense mechanism or what it is, but but obviously behavior patterns with the group has to change. Either it gets changed amongst themselves or this board has to take action, but it has to be done as a full board and within our boundaries. And and that's going to take a little bit of time, but I think things are moving forward based on everything that's been said tonight in the last meeting.
All right. So so I I don't know if there's any any suggestion. I mean, I think we have some information to gather. Remind keeping this on for for another meeting. Come back and the board can take some kind of action at that time. I think it's getting, I think there is a lot to this. And as I stated all along, we do need to act within our authority.
Is it something we need to re refer how you how you want to do that?
No, we don't need to. Then we just, I'll put it on the next one.
Relegate.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody. Green news to consider and if appropriate approve a request from the Branford Compassion Club for the use of the town green sharing with the James Blackstone Memorial Library on October 3, 2021 from noon to 5:00 PM, the whole animal awareness day.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I move a second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, pass you Nancy. Item four, correspondence. We have a few emails. Dear Board of Selectmen, although the Parkside Village issue remains on your agenda, two other items referred to your full board by the RTM have yet to be considered. These include the targeted and unconstitutional removal of town hall corrupt signs by the Public Works Department and two, the establishment of an ad hoc committee to study the 77 acre Tabor property currently being given away without authorization by the first selectman to gain political favor. Please place these, both these items on the agenda for tonight's meeting for public input and consideration by your entire board. Addressing that, first with the the study, I believe that request came from the RTM. I believe it was just to the Selectmen's office, not to the board for the establishment. But in any event, I will reiterate once again, I think for the third time at the Board of Selectmen, yeah, I'm not in favor of a doing a study, a development study planned for that. Correct, it's not given away. The full 77 acres fully remains a town of Branford property. We talked about, when I took office in 2013, I came in after hundreds, if not thousands of people had submitted a petition to the town opposing development in on that piece of property. Taking office, I have talked to a number of residents who had concerns of what may happen out there. And quite ask you, I think, thinking all the way through to create a document that we have identified potential development uses for the property at this time, we'd only create divisiveness plus can also be used to not in the best interest of the town. That's why I'm opposed and I will not be moving forward with
Comment, please.
Development study for the Tabor property.
Comment, please. Comment, please.
Yes, go ahead.
Please. First of all, that was addressed, if I'm not mistaken, to the Board of Selectmen. It's not your unilateral decision what to do. It's certainly not your unilateral decision what to do on that 77 acres. And quite frankly, the town should know this. You're giving the whole thing away. You know, for you to say you don't want development, in your own way, you're developing it down there because you're giving it away to all your green cult friends. And that's the truth. I mean, I've said that in front of the green cult. And that's what's going on down there. Let's be really honest about this. You know, you're completely disingenuous. You say thousands of people didn't want development, thousands of people didn't want public works down there. You never gave them the option to talk about a golf course or ball fields or anything else. You never put that before the community. Why don't you do it now? That's not your 77 acres to do with what you want. What is it? The RTM is very clear about it. Rule 73 dash three that the RTM handles all of the real estate matters in this town, not the first selectman. So I don't know who you think you are that you have the authority to just take 77 acres and do whatever you think should be done. That is so wrong. That is so bad. But that's the way you govern, isn't it? You just do whatever you want. You just do whatever you want.
Okay, thank you.
RTM, I don't know why the RTM sent it over here. They should have set up their own committee. Because I could tell them already that you weren't going to do anything. It's shameful, Jamie, absolutely shameful what you're doing.
They could and is. Michael Piricon, is there a comment or is that handed up from before? Okay, I hear much of that. Yes, to. Go ahead, Representative Everson.
Thank you, Mr. First Selectman. This is Representative Tracy Everson on the Fifth District. And what I had requested and what the RTM had discussed was to do, put together a group of neighborhood residents and also town officials to determine what would be the best use of that property. It was never slugged as a development study. It was simply going to be a community group working to determine what might be the best uses for Tabor in this town. Presently, it's like the Public Works area, part two, as well as the Shoreline Greenway Trail. And that was the whole reasoning behind the discussion that was held at the RTM. It was never discussed as a development study. That was never a word that was utilized at all. I'm sorry, Jamie, but that is a word that you've inserted into this and it doesn't belong.
It was potential uses. So I recall I was at the meeting.
Which is not.
Potential uses, yeah, actually, I was on the meeting, go back. But thank you for your comments. Any other comments? All right. And then what was the other part of this?
Can we hear from the other two selectmen? Can we hear from the other two selectmen, please? I mean, it was sent to the Board of Selectmen. I'd like to hear from Selectman Higgins and Selectman Dunbar as to why they think that it's okay for the first selectman to give away 77 acres of town property with nobody else's input.
Okay, I'm reading your correspondence and they have a right to answer if they like. Thank you.
I hope they don't sit there. You're telling me the other two selectmen are just going to sit there while you give away 77 acres?
Okay, thank you.
Are you not giving away 77 acres?
That's exactly what he's doing.
You can't do it without the RTM, Wayne, you know that. The RTM needs to step up if they have some issues. I haven't seen anything given away and I wouldn't, I would say something if it was being given away. Maybe the usage is not what people wanted and certainly they can say something about that. But the property can't be given away without the RTM.
He's doing it.
It was there. He's not doing it, he can't do it.
He's doing it right now. Don't you follow this? He's doing it. Why didn't you listen to Representative Everson? Okay?
I did.
No, you did not because it's a very simple request by the RTM, put together a community group to look at Tabor. And you're saying no? What's the matter with you?
Say no, you're twisting words and you shouldn't.
Well, I don't see.
Ask for something, she asked for something, the RTM. The RTM needs to step up if they don't like what's being done. You keep saying people need to do their jobs, that's within their privy. They need to do it. I don't have the power to give away property.
No, they sent it to you. You don't understand it. I'm sorry, second selectman, you do not understand that he is giving it all away. The Greenway Trail is a good start. He's putting other things down there, you're letting him do it. And the point is, the RTM did do something. They sent it to Board of Selectmen to put together an ad hoc committee. What what clearer directive do you need?
Okay, thank you. I think this been debated.
It's not been debated, it's not been debated at all.
It's been answered. You might not be happy with the answer, it's been answered.
It's not what you were asked to do. It wasn't me, it was the RTM. I hope the town is watching this, I really do. And shame on all of the selectmen for letting this happen.
Okay.
Shame on all of you.
So as far as the targeted unconstitutional removal of town hall corrupt signs by the Public Works Department, as I stated in the past, they clearly were not targeted and it was not unconstitutional. That's my position. If any other member would like to, of the board, would like to comment, since this was addressed to the board, I welcome that. But they were clearly proven that we're not targeted. We talked about the history of the removal of signs. We talked about public works doing their of removing signs. And and I do not see anywhere where it was unconstitutional for us to remove it.
Why don't you?
Answer, I not like it if the other board, okay.
Why don't you let me put on my presentation? Let me put on my presentation for the whole community and let the community judge whether or not it was unconstitutional. Let them judge whether or not it was targeted. Why don't you let them do that? But you know, you're afraid of that. You don't want me to screen share, you don't want the truth out there.
If the board, if the board members, if we, if there was an agenda item that we were taking action on, we could, but I provided you an answer.
This was sent to you by the RTM.
Okay.
It was sent to you by the RTM to look into it.
Yeah, and I provided them an answer.
No, you did not. And what are the, what are the other two selectmen there?
We send this back to the RTM Rules and Ordinance Committee to come up with sometime, we talked about it two meetings ago or a meeting ago. Can this be sent by us or do we have to do, do I have to do as an individual? Send it to the RTM Rules and Ordinance because it never went to them in all honesty. It got sent to admin for some reason. And let them come up with an ordinance that everybody can go by to so so we don't continue to have all this in the future. I mean, I don't care what the guidelines are. I'm not saying what they should be, but let the people putting the signs up have a guideline and let the people taking them down know what they're doing. And then maybe we can eliminate some of this in the future.
Yeah, so Dunbar, to that point, the if, from where I see, the signs that are being placed, the ones that are being removed. Now, I know we heard about examples of people having them removed off their private property. I can assure you that Public Works is not going and removing them off off of private property or those, you know, that somebody may have put right out in front of the ending, they thinking it's their lawn that they're maintaining. That's not where these signs are being removed. And again, this is something that, and I'm sure being a long time employee for the town of Branford, you're, I'm sure you're aware that previous Public Works directors, previous administrations had removed signs along the public right of way.
No.
And that is something that had occurred for decades.
This was selective, this was targeted because.
Mr. Cook, I let you speak and you, please let me, the board is having a discussion.
Speak again.
I guess, Selectman Dunbar, my point is, I have not seen anywhere where these signs are permitted to be placed there. So if we're going to have to start to now, I just don't believe you can create an ordinance to allow to be signs that are not permitted per state statute to be placed in these areas.
You're twisting this, you're twisting.
If you would do me a favor then, just so I can do some research, could you just, yourself, Trista, whatever, send me that statute number? I'll look up the statute, I just need the number.
Statute numbers that show when, when and where the signs are that are permitted. The signs that we're removing are the ones that are, there's, show me where, I have not seen anywhere and I've asked this to be reviewed and and I know the other agencies had this looked at as well, that there's nothing that shows where these signs that are being removed are permitted, are permitted. There are certain exceptions which has are permitted. And I could share you that, I think the Office of Legislative Research provided us some information, Selectman Dunbar, and I can share that to Selectman Dunbar or Selectman Higgins for your review as well as some other information.
Can I, can I speak to this, please?
Yeah, if you could do that, that'd be a big help. So that way I can get better answers later, thanks.
Can I speak to this, please?
I appreciate that as well.
Can I speak to this? All you're doing is putting out misinformation. The truth of the matter is, you go down Route One right now and you'll find 200 signs that are in the areas that you say that signs are not permitted in. But my point was, why did you take off my town hall corrupt signs and leave all the other signs there, which you clearly did? If you really want to stand behind what you're saying, First Selectman, let me do this. The next meeting, let me present for five minutes, screen sharing, and I will show the entire community that everything you just said is a categorical lie. It absolutely is, and you know it's a lie.
Okay.
You don't let me do that. You don't let me do that.
Thank you, I'm not going to debate this here.
No, you're not going to debate it because you're absolutely 1,000% wrong. And once again, you're running away from it.
Sorry, Selectman, did you make a comment?
I'm sorry.
Did Selectwoman Higgins, did you make a comment after Dunbar?
Yeah, my head is spinning. Yes, I agreed with Ray, I, I, I want to look into it if you can also, you know.
Oh, absolutely, yes. I'd like to be to share that information.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to ask the other two selectmen if I could make a presentation at the next meeting. Five minutes, that's all I'm asking. Why can't I do that? Why can't I do that?
All right, I don't have a problem with it, but it's.
Okay, Selectman Higgins, can I do it for my signs?
No, I don't, I don't think so.
Why not? Why not?
I made my decision, I told you last time, let's not go through this.
We're talking about an entirely different issue.
No.
You keep hiding around the fact, Angie, that you know, these issues.
Not only Angie, my name is.
You do not answer the questions and you say, well, you keep bringing them up.
I don't like my answers, sir, please. Let's.
With all respect, you know, you say you keep bringing up the question, well, why didn't you answer them?
You're disrupting the meeting. You, you're disrupt, stop disrupting the meeting.
I'm ashamed of this town.
End the meeting so we can go to the Privet Housing Authority.
Mr. Cook, you need to stop disrupting the meeting.
I'm not disrupting the meeting, we were having a conversation. It was a conversation. When you don't like what I see, I'm disrupting. Okay, I'll see you next meeting, but this is going away.
All right, dear Board of Selectmen, a growing number of citizens are concerned that the First Selectman is unconstitutionally, unethically implementing measures to silence citizens in order to prevent them from presenting the facts about dishonesty and corruption in his administration. It is asked that Selectman Dunbar and Selectman Higgins each publicly address these citizens' concerns at your meeting. Thank you for your prompt attention to this matter. Cerely Wayne Cook. I think it's clear that nobody's being silenced.
Can I speak to that?
No, you know, we're going to get moving because.
Can I speak to that? Can I speak to that? See, you are silencing, if you don't let me speak to that.
You are. The forum, let's have.
I want to say, no, I want to say something. You're silencing me in the very thing we just saw by not letting me present a screen sharing presentation to put on about. You're silencing me in the very thing we just saw by not letting me present a screen sharing presentation to put on about the signs. If this was a live meeting, the truth of the matter, you couldn't stop me. I'd bring posters in and you couldn't.
That's enough.
Huh?
That's enough. Right now. I go to a B, Privet Housing Authority.
Thank you.
Well, go to the housing authority. I'm not stopping you.
All right. I, please, please, you stop interrupting the board.
I did like to say, you know, if you're not silencing, why can't I put on my presentation?
All right, you, you know what?
We'll put it on at the library.
All right, please. All right. Um, 77 acre.
Adjourned.
All right. There, I got one more letter.
Who's, who's?
It is asked that the entire Board of Selectmen publicly address the growing concerns regarding the potentially hazardous debris pile at the Atlantic Warfsire site. At a recent RTM meeting, the first selectman was asked by RTM members to contact the property owner about the following. RTM concerns with the hydroseating the piles, covering the piles in some other manner, reporting back to the RTM on further environmental testing. Instead, in direct disregard for RTM members' concern, piles were hydroseated the very next day, leaving serious concerns that the first selectman has any intention of addressing RTM questions and ensuring the public safety of the site. Thank you for your prompt attention to this matter. Sincerely, uh, Wayne Cook. This was a petition, Mr. Costanzo is on the line. Um, as I stated previously at a, a number of meetings, I had contacted the owners. Um, expressed the, uh, RTM's concerns, uh, reported back, uh, the owner's positions. Um, and as has been stated, uh, in multiple meetings, not only, um, by me, but through, through others and through correspondence by both, uh, Department of Public Health, the East Shore District Health Department, as well as, uh, deep and um, and, uh, uh, our building department, building department, all the, uh, things are proper, has been properly filed. All protocols have been followed. The testing is, is up to date in terms of the sequencing uh, for the piles. There was stated in an email that both, um, by, I believe it's Department of Public Health, they didn't see any imminent public health risk. Uh, my inquiries to the, uh, East Shore District Health share that. We do not have any authority to mandate that they cover the piles as, as requested. Um, so, uh, therefore I don't see any further action that, um, the town or this body, uh, hey.
Why don't you let Mr. Costanzo speak to that?
Stop interrupting, please.
I thought you were done.
This, uh, Peter Black, our representative, just quick. So we're, we have, we were down. Member, we were down.
Ray Ingram, you're unmuted. All right. So that's my position on it. I don't know if any of the other selectmen have anything to add. Um, I, I, I do see Mr. Costanzo is also on the line. He's, uh, welcome to add anything, but, uh, that, that's my position. I don't see anything else that this body can do.
Is he being muted again? Cause he?
Yeah, he, he, there's, nobody's muted, obviously. Uh, they can unmute themselves.
Well, I can't believe he's not saying anything because he's disgusted as I am about what's going on over there. So I, I just can't believe that he's not saying anything because I know that many times he wanted to unmute him.
This petition, I, I, I. Okay.
No, this is, this is wrong. I know that he's trying to say something and you're not letting him or he's not getting through somehow because the truth of the matter is he would definitely be speaking to this because he and I speak about this quite often. And what's going on over there is wrong. So I would want to.
If, if I may, Jamie, I'm sorry. I just want to, for the record, to, I'm the host of this meeting and nobody's been muted.
Well, that's fine, but maybe it's on his end, Trista. I don't know.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. Nobody's muted.
You have no control over that, Mr. Cook.
But I know that he would be saying something right now if he could. That's all I know. So why don't we wait to the next meeting before you categorically, once again, unilaterally just decide on this yourself?
Yeah.
We'll wait until the meeting.
Miss, Selectwoman Higgins?
Uh, I don't believe it's been unilateral and, uh, we've discussed this uh, at the last several meetings. In fact, the last meeting for a very long time. We've addressed what our obligations are as selectmen. Uh, and, uh, there's nothing further here at this time that, that this board can do. That's my opinion.
Well, with all respects, Selectman, at the last meeting or the one before that, you didn't even know what was going on over there. You had to ask the first selectman, can you tell me what's going on? So I don't think you've done too much research on your own, with all respect.
Okay.
His word for it.
Yeah. All right.
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, so you can.
Second.
Second, I, Selectman Dunbar, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks.
Thank you.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.